If I may have everybody's attention, please. I'd like to welcome you all to City Council tonight. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all. There it is. Before we begin the agenda this evening, I would like to make an amendment. Council, you did receive information on a letter for the Public Utilities Commission, and it will appear at the end of the agenda if you agree to have the agenda amended to include it, so you'll have an opportunity to be able to read it between now and then.
That's one of those.
I do need to have a motion that we amend the agenda to put this on if there are questions, and if not, if I can have a motion.
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to amend the agenda to include the letter to the Public Utilities Commission of the State of Colorado at the end of the other part of the agenda.
May I have a second?
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Noiz.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Betz.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda, which is a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion or vote. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by council. I will ask of a citizen or a council member, we should say, have any specific item removed from the agenda for discussion, and at that point, either the public or a council member may ask that an item be set aside. The items on tonight's consent agenda are the approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes for September the 24th, 2019, approval of the expenditure vouchers of October the 8th, 2019, and approval of a special event permit for the Knights of Columbus to host a fundraiser at the Montezuma County Senior Citizen, Senior Citizen, Senior Center. So at this time, is there any item on that consent agenda that anybody would like to have set aside? All right. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull the name Mark Thompson off the expenditure list, please. Thank you.
Mark who?
Mark Thompson.
I'm sorry, Mike. What did you say?
Mark Thompson.
Any other items that anybody sees that they would like to see pulled? Okay. May I have a motion then now?
Mayor, City Council, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Mark Thompson line item for approval with the addition of $4,778.77.
Second.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Noiz.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Betz.
Aye.
Sheek.
Aye.
All right. We have no presentations this evening. At this time is the first opportunity for citizen participation. If you have an issue that you would like to raise that is not on the agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is...
Judy, is your light green?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, just push, push the button down and hold it. Tell it turn green.
Okay. My name is Judy Shonameyer. We live at 960 Sligo Street, which is right before Sligo becomes Rampart. We have a serious problem in our neighborhood that I believe you discussed once before here, and Karen and John and I think the city attorney, as well as the police department, have spent a lot of time trying to deal with it. In the last six weeks or so since Labor Day, it's become worse, and it's a great concern to us and to our neighbors, John and Debbie Schmidt, who live around the block from us, but they abut the ditch bank, the Cortez ditch bank. The problem is mostly kids, all boys as far as I can tell, mostly between the ages of 12 and 15, riding recreational motorized dirt bikes in the street and on the ditch bank. I know there's a lot of issues with the ditch bank, but there's a big problem with them doing this in the street. Last Thursday night, I was alarmed when I saw a kid come in front of our house, go up Rampart to shortways, turn around, which is what they do, step on the gas so they can go as far as possible, as fast as possible down Sligo. Well, when he got in front of our house, he popped a wheelie. Jack's also seen kids pop in wheelies. They also ride standing up when those things are going way too fast. I don't know how many of you know about the young man who probably was about 12 or 13. A year ago Labor Day weekend, was doing this business with some friends, riding up to Rampart, turning around, stepping on the gas, coming back as fast as he could go, lost control of the bike right in front of our house, landed in our yard, and ended up with brain injury. I don't want to see that happen to any more kids. I am haunted by that vision of that boy lying on his back and his friends standing over him saying, "Joey, stay with us." That should not be going on. These kids have no training. There's lots of brain research that shows that kids' brains aren't developed well at that point, not as much as they need to be to be on that kind of equipment. And what I would like to propose, and Debbie can come talk about what goes on on the ditch bank, but it's a serious problem in both places, for the kids to be on the city streets, and they have no sense about the damage that they can do to themselves and to other people. We live in an area where there are almost no sidewalks, so everybody uses the street to push strollers, walk dogs, just walk whatever. And those bikes are a hazard. They're endangering everybody who uses the street. Please, what I would like to have you do is pass an ordinance that would ban these recreational motorized dirt banks, bikes, from people riding them in the city of Cortez.
That's time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Judy. There we go. Okay. Never been here before. I don't know how it all works.
My name is Debbie Schmidt. As Judy said, we're neighbors, and we are also...
My husband, John, and I are very concerned about the dirt bikes. We property backs up to the ditch bank, and it's a long expanse of property. We have a big pie-shaped backyard, so it's several hundred feet. Kids will come in on their bike, and once they get to the straightaway, which is by Judy and Jack's house, they will...
Open their bikes up.
They will open their bikes up and ride just as fast as they have... I'm so sorry. I've seen them come up upon people that are walking their dogs. I've seen them come up behind mothers pushing their babies in strollers, other people just walking. The last week, I saw them come up behind, I think, the high school kids who are out jogging, and they're loud, they're obnoxious, they're going to hurt somebody. They get right past our yard, and then they go up and down the actual ditch bank, and then ride their bikes over around the Brandon Gate area, and then they come back up, go back and forth again down the ditch bank, and depending on the time of the day, the time of the year, they can do this for several hours. They might just do it for half an hour. It's a fire hazard as well. There's a lot of dry brush back there that their bikes could spark off, plus they're just loud and noisy, and it's my backyard, you know? I can't do anything back there without these kids going back and forth on their bikes, and, but mostly, I'm afraid they're going to hurt somebody, including themselves.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Yes. This has nothing to do with anything that's on the agenda tonight, right?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll see.
All right.
Okay, David, Karen, you mentioned that you didn't know what Ikle was. Kevin Ballmer was here last meeting, September 24th.
You need to state your name and your address.
Okay, can we start over again then?
Okay.
Okay, my name is Mindy Nelson. Karen, you mentioned that you didn't know what Ikle was. Kevin Ballmer was here last meeting, September 24th. I didn't know what it is. Ikle is an international organization. Does Cortez...
Mindy, let me stop you just real quick right now. I did follow up on your email with Kevin.
Okay.
He did not raise that. He didn't even know what Ikle was. He had to go online to look it up. I was, I was a little bit surprised when I got your email, because I didn't remember hearing anything about it either, and I just wanted to get to double-check to be sure that he had, that he had raised that, and he did not. Kevin is not a lawyer. He didn't know what Ikle was, and it was not part of his presentation. His presentation focused on what the Colorado Municipal League, the services that they provide to participating members, was. So it had nothing to do with, with that issue at all, nor Agenda 21. So just, I just want to correct the record on that.
Providing a little bit of facts that is going to take place if you follow the steps that the others... Can I just use that password?
He, he, he didn't, he...
The Colorado Municipal League doesn't deal with that particular program that you're talking about, and he didn't mention it.
Okay. Do I get to start like from the over, that you're speaking from after I've finished? Because now you're taking up all my time.
Well, I just, I just didn't want misconceptions to be left unaddressed. So why don't you, why don't you give her three and a half minutes, and then we move forward.
I don't know how to. Sorry. Close up at the end.
Okay.
Because the international membership by the states and counties can only be done on a voluntary basis, as violated Article 1, Section 10, in the United States Constitution. No state shall enter into a treaty allowing government to interfere with power. Once the state proposes to allow the state to contribute money from the federal treasury, they can assert total control of the local government's municipal property, not including regulations. Please oppose this repackaging to our federal law. Plus, for more transparent process, we the people are asking council table the update for the land use code until the next city council has their life plan. There is no level of that in our plan. This being said, everyone needs to know about the city of Cortez as a member of the council government, which pays dues developing regionalism. Region 9, the September 24th meeting, announced $36,000 for their dues. Do people know that this is being paid out of our tax dollars? These officials are not elected, self-appointed, and they are having to say so to be able to change the way that we choose to live. This is federal funding going to local government to create regional plans. This cannot be done without the control of the land and land use. Regions take away our opportunity to have an impact for representative government.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to address council? All right. Thanks. Thanks for coming tonight on that. All right. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, ordinance 1267, Series 2019. It's the final reading for the Cortez Land Use Code and zoning map for the city of Cortez. Just to be sure that everybody is on the same page, we passed a resolution in July of 2018 regarding comments from the public, and I just want, because we have a lot of people here this evening that I know are going to be wanting to express an opinion. Comments shall be limited to four minutes per person, and all comments will be addressed to the mayor. For public hearings, the public hearings shall be declared open, and individuals will be invited to make their comments, present information, and express their views to City Council. There is a timer that's there. If you'll kind of watch that when you get up to make your comments and kind of, as you're saying what you choose to say, just kind of watch your time so that you don't run over. I may ask for alternating comments, and everyone will be allowed to speak once before anyone is allowed to speak again. Citizens will only be allowed to speak a maximum of two times on any one agenda item. Following the completion of citizens' comments, then council members will debate among themselves and may ask questions of staff or citizens at that time, and there will be no time limit for the agenda item of presentations. So, at this time, Tracy, would you like to... Tracy or Mike, would you like to open it up?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Again, this agenda item is the adoption of a new land use code, and for the benefit of the public, I just want to make note that the land use code will regulate development and land use within the municipal boundaries of the city of Cortez. The land use code was drafted to implement the city's comprehensive plan and the heart and soul values. The council in place at the time of the beginning of the project and the planning commission at the time were interviewed in small groups to gather input on what the city wanted to do with the new code. Stakeholder interviews were held, meetings with the Citizens Advisory Committee were held, and subsequent public outreach meetings were held at various milestones in the drafting of the code. And all of that fed into several different drafts, but specific to the draft that was released for review and final changes, which is the complete version that we sent out last October, there were three public outreach meetings, many workshops with planning commission and council, and a joint work session. So all of this has led us to today, and staff requests that council please consider all testimony on the code, and this would include comments received during the public outreach meetings several months ago, which were summarized and forwarded to the P&amp;Z and council in previous packets. Also, please consider the written comments received, as well as the planning commission recommendation. And in addition, you should consider what you hear tonight, but please give all the feedback the same consideration. Please consider the citizens that did show at the public outreach meetings and who wrote comments as you consider testimony tonight as well. Staff has worked considerably on the numerous drafts of the code over time, and the draft before you is a result of input from the planning commission workshops, the council workshops, and the joint planning commission and city council work session. Also, we considered public input along the way, which was part of those discussions with planning commission and council. So I also'd like to make a reminder that the code can be changed as it's needed. So again, this is not a static document. It can be changed. It's dynamic, and it can be changed as conditions change in the city, or even if we get a different set of values established through a different comprehensive planning process. So with all of that, I'm just going to keep it short. Staff recommends council adopt the code, knowing that it can be amended if needed, and staff requests that council provide direction to address any concerns or issues with a path forward for adoption to make this code work if you're wanting to discuss certain elements in particular.
Okay. Before I open it up for citizens on site, we're not going to take the time to read it, but Bud Garner did send a letter for the public record, and it will be read into the public record. Council members have a copy of that letter, so. All right. At this time, if you would take your turn, you need to state your name, your address. The light should be green when you, when you begin to speak, and don't bother to turn it off as you leave. We'll just leave the mic on. Councilwoman Carlson will set the timer. So again, if you kind of pay attention so that you don't run over, and then that way we can expedite this as quickly as possible. So who would like to be first?
My husband and I are developers and business owners of the city of Cortez. We care about what our community looks like, just like all of you, but we also have businesses that we are concerned about. Therefore, we cannot avoid any major public carry. This land use code needs more special. The gender facades, the increased land space requirements, increased parking spaces, and fences, walls, and farms are just a few areas that are concerned. These may seem like simple requirements, but all coupled together, they could be quite cost prohibitive to a business. I could see a fence or a wall costing tens of thousands of dollars, not to mention, I think that some of these requirements, such as the dirt or facade, will also bring a lack of uniqueness or individuality to Cortez. After attending workshops, meetings, voicing our concerns, writing our concerns to town, we seem to still walk away with more questions than answers. We ask about the rights and the needs and the dream of those rights, and we were told that they would be discussed on a case-by-case basis. This seems ambiguous and not streamlined, or in expert eye, any process whatsoever. When asked about fences and walls of the P&amp;Z, we were told that if we wanted to expand in the industrial park, that we would have to have a buffer next to your natural area. And one member said, "I do not want to see buildings walk by the hand of your area." Well, that's all fine, and I respect that, but this is not about I. This is about us as a community. And if a business has to build hundreds of feet of buffers, they probably won't do it to very big costs. And also, given the geography of the area, you will always be able to see the buildings in your natural area. We also asked questions about the rest of the rights, and how this new code is going to affect the subdivision. And one member feels that he's not on the commission to make sure the builders make money. Well, I agree with that to some extent, but as a P&amp;Z commission and a city council, you are here for the developers and the businesses, because if we are not able to make profits, we're going to go out of business, and then you're going to see restricted economic growth. Also, something to consider that I noticed, St. Louis, and in the downtown business district, which is from Linden Street to Harrison Street, along Main Street, and eight blocks along, there are 14 empty buildings. If this new land use code is to pass, I would encourage people, there's even one of these buildings offering the first month of lease free.
Thirty seconds.
That tells us that our downtown is not thriving, quite the contrary. And now we see that the general is choosing to develop in the county and not the city. Does that also tell us that the cost of building in the city is cost prohibitive? Cortez should be doing more to incentivize growing and monitoring growth. I ask that the new land use code is not to be adopted at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Allen Grace of the Battle County, and I live from Long Island, and I grew up in this area and know the city of Cortez all by my... I think city Cortez has some commute that the last speaker just said. I didn't know the number of the buildings in town that I need to report here, and I took that degree. This land use code, whether it be put onto the owners of stores and businesses down town, it could provide more people out of town that have been in this town and are going to thrive. I don't want to talk about some of the things that city Cortez has already done that I think are not good for the city, that the county of Cortez is making it more, more beautiful, those meetings, and what caused them. Those meetings weren't a good idea, and that's all I'm going to say. Well, I'll say one thing. They're unsafe. Already, and I have too many things to distract, right? We have Main Street that is still in the highway, and people can't see everything they would want, and when you have a truck like the meetings are in town, that's going to impact life, from pedestrians to other drivers, to just, to, to... But let's move away from that. The storefronts downtown, I think, to keep those things thriving, we have to let people be, be, so that they can demonstrate the data business that's going to thrive, and I don't think this land use code is going to do that for those businesses. I had the opportunity to walk down Main Street every day from Courthouse down to Sligo. In doing that, I found out that the city of Cortez has a responsibility as well for safety and health security. As I walked along, there was plenty of people that actually walked down, and I don't think too many of you folks do that. You don't need to, you have, you have gas, so you don't need to. But if you had to walk down Main Street, you'd find out, Councilwoman Carlson, is that right? Yeah. I see, I see how you, how you react to this. The city of Cortez is going to have responsibility. You planted some trees, those, those things are hazardous. People have walked down, and the way that they bring, there's a drop nearly every one of those. They're different. Each one of them was different in the way that they were put in, and I was walking along. Other people that walked that street, walked shoulder to shoulder. I had to either wait for people to walk past me, so I'd go around the tree, or try to do one. I tried to do that once. There was a drop that made my spine, I noticed my spine, you know, I felt it. They're all not built to that. That's a kind of example of city Cortez is going to do for already owned businesses, and not an option at this, this time. Last meeting, it was made a suggestion by one of the council members, and it would be put off. I think people, the business owners deserve more time to understand what you're going to let in fines and tolls. It's $1,650 maximum. I'm glad Antonio was able to take jail time.
Time.
I think that was a good question.
Time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
City council members, I appreciate you. I would like to speak up on behalf of landscape and the new ordinance, and I think it is at the minimum level we should be installing. I think the idea of landscaping in general is to view by this property, and we want to be in the city of Cortez. I understand the constraints of this on developers, but I think if you look at the long run, this will be good for Cortez, and I think it's going to draw more people to this town. I think the downtown area is already undergoing a significant change, I think we have some really upcoming businesses downtown, I'm sure promising. I think another aspect of trees and landscaping that we might not be considering is the fact that you can have just parkscapes in your landscaping, it traps line heat, and so if you have trees specifically, but also other vegetative plants, they even emit a lot of water vapor and actively cools the city. So if you have just asphalt and concrete, as you can see in a city like Phoenix, it traps heat, it's called heat out of effect. I think Cortez is very vulnerable for this kind of environment to happen, really hot in this town. And so if we could plant more trees, that's going to make it a more comfortable environment for people to live. I also think it makes it more attractive, I think that we're seeing a lot of growth in the rain, other things against, that's stretching in this direction. And so if you continue to put in plant space with a just block of plants, you're going to have, people are going to want to move out here, I think we're going to see a lot more towns like you see going to Mexico, where they just cut down their top of the trees, it's not attractive. I think we've done a lot of progress with murals, art, I think the medias are beautiful, I like the trees and the medias, I think it slows traffic down, I think it distracts the eye from just four lanes of pavement. So I think we're making the right choices, we're moving in the right directions, I understand the constraints of this on the guys, but I think in the long run, it's going to be better.
Thank you.
Can we turn the clocks a little bit?
Oh, yeah, sure, yes, if you can't see it, absolutely. It needs to be turned just a little, Mike, can you turn it just a little?
Yeah.
We need to be able to see it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want, yeah, okay. Can you see it, can you see that?
I can't, I can't run the clock without seeing that. Sorry, yeah, like, that would work, okay, hold on, let me stop it.
Would it be helpful if we...
Oh, God, I've broken it. Got it, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Hello, Sheldon Randall, 22668 Rhodes. Being a lifelong local business owner, landowner, within the city limits of Cortez, I have deep interest in the prosperity and growth of the city as a whole. The proposed land use code contains updates that will directly affect the current and future development of commercial, residential, and industrial sectors of our city. Because I have shared interests in the city, I also have the same goal of making sure the city of Cortez continues to provide opportunities for economic development and growth, especially in our commercial and industrial development. As you know, this growth is crucial in bringing in new opportunities to an area such as jobs, offerings, and housing, to name a few. I recently went through the process of building in the industrial park, the entire process of site development and approval took over five months, much longer than I anticipated. So I do appreciate the concept of trying to make the process of building and development less lengthy and easier on the developer or business owner. The proposal, the proposed land use code does not accomplish this goal. I have spent some time trying to understand and read the proposed new land use code, although I have not made it through the code 400-plus page entirety. I have found that it takes an extensive knowledge of the code and analysis to understand, as it is complicated and cumbersome. This seems to go against one of the main reasons for revising the land use code that was stated in the grant application in 2014. The grant application states the proposal for the new land use code involves analyzing and developing a more appropriate framework that doesn't send the planners and/or citizens to multiple sections of the code to find answers to the question. I have many concerns with the land use codes as a proposed. My first regards, the buffering requirements set are in section 7.02.04. This is a concern to me because I own property in the industrial park, the only place within the city limits that I could locate my business. I went through the building process just over two years ago with intention of adding to my building and my business as it grew, which I was planning to do in the next couple of years. Due to the costs associated to the change in code, I definitely take pause when considering the project due to all the added-on expenses. For example, with the proposed changes to the code, I will be required to build a 15-foot wide buffer with at least two deciduous trees, one evergreen tree, three ornamental trees, 15 shrubs per 100 linear feet of the side of my property that borders gear natural area. In addition to this, I will have to have a minimum of a six-foot wall on the same side of my property that borders the natural area. Along with the requirement, I will also have to add in a drip system to all the landscaping and will need to build an eight-foot tall made of, a fence made of masonry wood or earthen berm, earthen berm landscaping on the other side, other three sides of my property. Not only are these requirements overbearing, burdensome, and expensive, but due to the topography of my property in the gear natural area and all of the public right-of-ways you see, you will still be able to see my building in outdoor storage. So what is the point? These extra requirements may not seem much on paper, but once you start applying each of the requirements, the additional costs start to add up and weigh heavily against our expansion. It was offered to us at the PNC meeting that we attended that since we don't agree with this requirement, that we should move our business to the county. I don't believe that the city of Cortez really wants existing businesses to seek expansion and growth out of the city limits. This may sound like it is all about the extra expense, but this is our livelihood. This is how we not only make our money for ourselves...
Sorry, time.
Thanks.
I can't see the clock now.
You're going.
Okay, so now I wished I would have written down what I wanted to say. Basically, my name's Dave Waters, 16415, County Road 21.4. I think you've all heard what we've had to say. We're here basically not only for our businesses, but the other businesses in town that aren't even aware that this is going on. There's been very little outreach for this. There was three meetings held within nine days, and none of the businesses, none of the businesses were reached out to that this will affect. We're talking businesses on Main Street where there's 14 empty buildings within eight blocks that you're going to find thousands of dollars if they have too many posters in their window. All we want is table this thing, look at it well, talk to some people that are going to be involved, that's all we're asking. We're not asking you to get rid of it. Please, 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 talk to the businesses. This, if it passes tonight, has the potential to cost our business tens of thousands of dollars, not only ours, but other businesses that don't even know this is happening because of three outreaches in nine days in the middle of the winter when we happen to be on vacation. That's the only time that we can get away, and we happen to be gone, so we did not participate. There are so many problems with this, it's just incredible. Everybody's made this about the facade. The facade is the smallest part of this. My problem is, and I think you're going to deal, I hope you're going to deal with this tonight, but it's one small problem. I have some lots that are only 6,000 square feet, they're located next to each other. So if this passes in its original form, each lot that I have to combine, I will lose $30,000 on, where my neighbor, who only has one of those lots, will be able to build the same house on that lot as I am. That is not right. There is a lot of these things in there, there's some very important things in here, the vested rights that we've brought up. You are going to have some developers in here that are irate. South Point just sold for over, I believe, $350,000, they have no idea that this is going on. That property, because you're going to deal with it on an individual basis, and they have not kept up their vested rights, could be just a big parcel of property again. And these people don't know that. Nobody's reached out to them. There is at least a dozen paper subdivisions, and the owners don't know that you could do away with them. You may, or you may not. It's going to be considered on an individual basis. You're talking tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars that you're going to cost local businessmen, not just the ones on Main Street, that you may find thousands of dollars because they have too many posters in their windows. There goes the 4H posters, there goes the fireworks posters, these people can't put that in there because they'll take up too much space. Thank you.
Mayor, Karen, and city council members, thank you for having us here tonight to bring up our opinions.
David, you need to state your name and address.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
David Temple, 18501 Road J, Cortez. I've been following this planning procedure and document development for, since its inception, it's been going on for a long, long time. I think the city staff have done a beautiful job of addressing a better ordinance so that the city can move forward. So I am basically here tonight to support the city council in voting this ordinance in, it's taken a long time, and there's been plenty of effort and discussion and time for everybody's inputs. So thank you.
Robert, Robert Dobree, 29 East Main Street. While I recognize the work that staff has put into this, before imposing additional costs on the taxpayers of Cortez through the updated land use code, the city council owes it to the citizens to be in compliance with Colorado law and show care for their tax dollars, which is why I'm asking you to refrain from voting on the land use code. The most basic duty of a mayor and city council is to provide oversight and care for tax dollars collected from its citizens, a duty that has been neglected. Although a municipal audit is required to be filed with the state each year and available for review, the last Cortez audit available is from 2015. Currently, the city is currently unable to apply for state grants, the county treasurer has withheld property taxes because the state of Colorado cannot be assured those funds will be treated with due care. The city manager, excuse me, the city manager was recently quoted in the journal that he lacks confidence that the different fund balances are accurate. It is inappropriate for this council to continue to make major decisions about the future of Cortez while the taxpayers and the council do not have access to the financial information that should inform those decisions, which is why I'm asking this council to table the vote on the updated land use code or any other legislation not required for day-to-day operations until the audits for 2016, 2017, and 2018 are complete and the citizens of Cortez have had appropriate amount of time to review them. And this council has proven that is in, that is in compliance with Colorado law, able to collect property taxes, and up to the task of providing the necessary oversight for the city of Cortez.
Council members, my name is Lance McDaniel, 615 West Third Street in Cortez. I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was the one that stated that it's not our business to make money for developers. But the fact of the matter is, we've been working on this land use code for a long time. We've had public meetings, we have public meetings, we have public workshops, it's not just the three and nine days. We've been working on this, on this land use code for, for over a year. And we've already made concessions to Mr. Waters at his request for the, at the last planning and zoning meeting, about the zoning, about the square lots, lot, lot, square footage, and the buffer zones around the industrial park. So those concessions were made. This is not a perfect document, Niva and Tracy will admit that it's not a perfect document, Mike and Phil will admit it's not a perfect document, but it's a working document. And if we don't have, I urge you to pass and support this so that we have a framework to move forward. There's, there are ways to remedy the problems with the land use code, there are ample ways to do it. So I urge that the council vote and approve this, approve this land use code, and so we can move forward. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Everybody's gone.
First of all, I'm not asking Mr. McDaniel's to make me money. I would like to point out that if the city council and the city of Cortez doesn't support their business people, Cortez withers up and dies. If we don't have development, we don't have housing, this land use code, all I hear is we need affordable housing. This does not support that theory. We have a lot of things that will affect that, bigger lot sizes, bigger setbacks, every, it's only a five-foot extra setback that this includes, but that's five foot of sidewalk, that's five foot of water, that's five foot of sewer, that's five foot of electricity, and that's five foot of gas. That all adds up, the prices are very expensive. If you want affordable housing, you need to understand that. Everything counts, every little thing counts towards affordable housing. It's not about making the developers and the business people money, but you have to support us. I'm asking you to support us, I'm not asking you to get rid of this, I'm asking you to postpone it, let us look at it. As far as I know, the public meetings were nine days, three meetings in nine days, which unfortunately, or fortunately for us, we were on vacation, so we missed that. But the businesses in Cortez are not aware of what's going on here, and it is not good for them. When they can't even use their own windows for their advertising, that they own without getting a possibility of a fine from the city, that's not, that's not supporting the businesses. Please just postpone this, give us a chance to talk to you. I'll organize it myself if I have to, I'll round them up, but give us a chance to get the businesses involved. Nine days in the middle of the winter is not a public outreach. This is not all, all a bad document, but there's some terrible things in there, and yes, it's a living document, but have you ever, ever tried to change something like this? I have. It's months and months and thousands and thousands of dollars, and sometimes it's just not worth it. Sometimes you just go to the county, or sometimes you just give it up. Let's make something that works for the city. I'm all about the city of Cortez, we are so heavily invested in the city of Cortez, or I wouldn't be here. You know, we're invested in, we have storage units, we have construction, we have single-family residences, we subdivide, we build houses, we do a lot in this town. And we're just asking for a chance to, to let you know the problems with this, because it's a whole lot easier to adopt it now than it will be to change it later. So give us a few months, just give us a few months, and let us talk to you, and round up some people, and get the news out there. A few months isn't going to break anybody, you know, but... A few months isn't going to break anybody, you know, but if you pass this tonight, I don't think it's going to be the legacy that you want to, you want to leave. I appreciate you listening to me, especially twice. Thank you.
This is my daughter's concerns. She is concerned in regards that there has been little to no discussion on chapter seven point oh three, the signs. She has owned a retail store in the central business district for the past eight years. This chapter will affect the way that she can conduct her business and others in the CBD. The proposed code lays out new guidelines for many types of signs, banners, and window signage that will no longer be acceptable. This section requires a revocable license agreement for all temporary ground signs, but does not indicate a reason other than giving the city the right to require removal of the sign for any reason, as a city official explained. So what is the purpose of the revocable license agreement? Is it to ensure ADA safety and compliance? If so, why not just write it in the code? How are businesses supposed to abide by the standards in the code when we are being asked to sign a blank check so that an official can determine if a sign is compliant or not? Also, these signs change many times of the year. This will have to be done each and every time the temporary sign is changed? What does this process entail, and how will it be enforced? Also, chapter seven point oh three mandates that a business cannot use signage or paintings to cover more than fifty percent of their window space. What is the reasoning? If you have a business where you have a large window space, such as she does, this is one of her largest assets. Why is it the responsibility of the city to determine how the business uses this asset? Marketing is essential for retail businesses, and this requirement is taking away opportunities for their businesses. This chapter also indicates that banners hung from awnings are non-conforming to the new code. This is again, another form of advertisement that many businesses, especially in the CBD, use. Another opportunity lost. Have these signage issues ever become a nuisance or a problem? If not, why add the extra stipulations? We also find this code to be incredibly specific in some areas and quite vague in others by using the language like "may" and such as. The specific language in the code could be limiting to the potential to investment in our area, while the vague language also lends itself to different interpretations depending on the reader or administrator. I know that we all can agree that we would like to see Cortez prosper, grow, offer affordable housing, and have more economic development. We can also agree that there do need to be some design and landscaping standards to ensure that our town is attractive and appealing to new growth, but also how much regulation is needed. As members of city council, I hope that you have read all of the code and are fully informed of all the implications and possible consequences that these new codes will have, because this is exactly what you are expecting of the public.
Okay, if nobody else has anything else to add on this, are there questions or comments, council?
I have a question for Tracy. Tracy, with regards to the discussion that this document can be changed, I'm curious about the process of how that happens if something comes up, you know, if Dave and Lana express a concern and they want us to address a specific issue that they feel has been drafted poorly, how do, what's that mechanism like?
Well, the most simplest version of that is, we make notice fifteen days before the planning commission discusses it. They discuss it, make a recommendation to council. We then take it to council for first reading on the ordinance. We have to notice it according to the land use code fifteen days before the hearing. Then it goes to a hearing at second reading. So we, we have to have fifteen day notices before it is discussed. So realistically, you know, in a best practices, it'd be fifteen days before planning commission, we'd wait for them to make a decision, then we would take it to council. So then it would be at least, you know, about a month after the planning commission hearing that council would have second reading.
So, so it's realistically applicable within sixty days?
Realistically. Now, depending on the issue, should we be having public input and discussion, and that could add to that, just depends on the issue, but yes.
Ninety, okay.
Mr. Waters made mention of the meetings were nine days. Is that accurate throughout the winter? Do we have three meetings in nine days?
That's probably accurate. You know, we did try to do it on different days of the week, different times of day, and in different locations, but there was kind of a frame, timeframe where we were doing that.
And then, and then how many planning and zoning meetings were there opportunities for, for input and discussion?
Um, well, pretty much any, there was the citizen input for any planning commission meeting we've had since the code draft was released. And any input could have been submitted in writing as we made note of. But there, there were several workshops focused on the land use code and then the council workshops as well, but we weren't necessarily taking public input at that time in the workshops.
I guess the thing that, that's concerning to me is that we're being asked to delay a process that we spent five years or so working on, and what's being asked is that, well, we push it back a little more so people have a little bit more time to come and look and see. Where, where are these other developers and contractors? I'm sure you have been raising your concerns with, with your fellow colleagues. I don't see them here tonight.
There's a lot of apathy, but I also believe that Tracy was asked to send down letters to some of those who know her, just like letters were sent down. And I don't know what I should have said.
And also, this is our busiest time of the year, so.
Well. Well, it's, I, I'm not suggesting that it's necessarily your job, but, but I guess I am suggesting this is something that's been in the newspaper, it's been talked about at numerous meetings. You know, either you're interested and you come down and you express and raise concerns or you don't. And, and yes, you all have been very fervent in your objections, and you, and you've attended many meetings, but, but you're single voices. I'm not saying a lot of other people that are coming to do it. And I, Lana, I agree with you, there's a lot of apathy, I understand that.
Please don't single out, because we're single voice and please make your decisions unwelcome or suggested to you. What about this gentleman? He said about the, you table it.
I'm sorry, say that again.
And you're saying what them, uh, what about this gentleman said, you can count.
Well, I'm, all I'm saying is that, is, is that Dave is saying that there are a lot of other developers that are objecting to this, but he's the only one that, that really has consistently come and embraced.
I'm saying will object to this because they do not know.
Well, but.
I do not know the people that purchased South Point, they're an investment group, they purchased that, you know, thinking that this is a subdivision, they go away. If this passes, it will be a discretion of the planning and zoning. They will be deceived. I'm saying it would have been very nice for planning and zoning to notify the people involved, people with own subdivision, they were not notified.
We're just like.
And yes, it was in the paper, it was in the paper, but we were out of town, we were trying to have a vacation. And, and the people that bought South Point do not, but they are, they were, I guarantee they were counting on having, that's right, they were counting on that being a subdivision when they bought it, and they're going to be very unhappy. All I'm saying is, we can just, you said you, you worked on it five years, we got to put that up, we got to comment on it for nine days. And we've been persistent, we, we come to your meetings, but a lot of those meetings, we've been told, I haven't played that well, we've been told, but realistically, you have nine days for the public.
Well, but the public, the public could come at any planning and zoning time. Yes, I'm sorry. If, 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 if you want to continue, do you want, is there something else you want to add to this, to add to your comments?
No.
No, Dave.
No, Cheryl, no.
Okay. If you're going to respond, we have to have you at the microphone, just because that's what picks up the recording.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I, I should have told you, I, I apologize.
But my base, my biggest problem with this is, there was three public meetings, other than planning and zoning that it may or may not have been on the agenda, I don't know. But there was, there was three public meetings, they were held within nine days. That's a very short period of time for anybody to pick up on it. And so that's why you're, you're not seeing people here. I guarantee you, people aren't going to believe what you're about to do to them, because they haven't read the four hundred and some pages. I haven't read the four hundred.
And so do you think that if we extend this another six months or another year, that any more people will have read it? I, I guess that's my, my major question.
I will make it my mission to make them read it.
No, it's not your mission, but what I'm saying is that.
If that's what it takes to.
If the intent is to extend the length of time so that people will have more time to read it, my guess is that probably there aren't going to be many that will.
If that's what it takes to protect my investment, that's what I'll do. You, you know, I've rounded up people before. Maybe it worked, maybe it didn't, but people don't realize that, that you're regulating how much of their windows in their store they can use. That's in the land use code.
Do you, do you understand, though, that this is applicable to only new construction, redevelopment, and improvements? That's right in section one point oh, one point oh one. It's applicable to new development, redevelopment, and substantial improvement. It's not, it's not applicable to.
Not the signs.
I'm sorry?
Not the signage, not the signage.
I think if you were going to add a sign to your building, that would fall under an improvement.
No, it, it involves windows.
Sure.
What you can put in your windows, and that will not, and there again, it's, it will be based on somebody's perception of whether it's for new construction or for every window. And that's, and I'm telling you this because we've run into this in the past. Maybe Mr. Green can.
I say, well, I mean, that's why I'm asking, there's an applicability section that specifically.
The sign code implies that every sign is not just new construction.
Okay.
Right.
There's existing business type signs you're going to have to follow.
Okay.
If they put a new sign up.
Sure. A new sign, which would be a substantial improvement or a re.
No, no.
No, it would be a different sign on my mind.
In your, in your window.
So you're just talking about changing content of a sign? Is that what you're?
No, it, it, the windows.
I, I understand the windows, but if there's already a sign in there and they just changed the content of the message, is that what you're saying?
The, the window may be painted, and it's to the maximum allowed in the land use code, and the city of Cortez brings in fireworks.
So that would be a situation.
And you put it in there, and that puts you over the edge. Somebody could.
Sure, so, but that would be a situation where if there's a problem that's arising, I hear there's a mechanism to address that and say, hey, this is an overburdened sum or part, part of this code. Can we revisit that?
There's always a mechanism.
Yes.
You can go to the Supreme Court, but that costs you time, money.
So I understand.
And that's not good for businesses.
Yeah, but we're talking about, so I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to pick on you, but just talking specifically about the sign issue. You're proposing holding up a code that deals with five hundred other topics because of a sign, an issue with, I know there's more, but I, I'm, I'm not trying to condense what you're saying, but because of an issue with the sign ordinance. Doesn't it seem like a more prudent use of our time to address those issues as they arise than to prolong and delay this, which I understand your frustration about the meeting, but I, I, I believe that there was additional public meetings. We've been, I've been on council since 2016, and I know that this has come up at other city council meetings where it's been properly noticed, aside from the three that you mentioned in nine days.
There was, I'm sure there was lots of public meetings, but they weren't.
Lots of them, yes.
They were not after you decided on this code. This code, after this code was finished and decided on, the public was given nine days. Three separate meetings in nine days to comment.
Were, were you following as we went through the structured parts where we did phase one of the plan? Because that's what this has been building up to. It wasn't like it just was released overnight and said, okay, read it. We've, we've done a structured plan since 2015?
Tracy, when was the code put online for, for, for public view and input?
So modules one and two were released when they were first given to staff, roughly, and that, so that each module is about three chapters, and I couldn't tell you exactly when, but those modules have been online since pretty early, like years ago.
Since approximately?
Two thousand fifteen and sixteen, maybe sixteen. And then the, the draft that we've been discussing ad nauseam for the last year was put online in October of two thousand eighteen. Does that sound right, Niva? Yeah, I mean, with the changes, there's been multiple versions of this current draft in the last year posted online. Yeah.
So, yes, I've basically been following it, but until it gets to the end product, then you study it well, because that's what's going to count. And that's where we're at, and that's what I'm telling you. Yes, there is a mechanism, mechanism. Sorry, my mouth's getting dry, but I've been through that mechanism before. And ninety days is a very optimistic timeframe for that. And there's a lot of money involved. If I have to wait to open a business for ninety days, hundred and twenty days, whatever it is, there is money involved, and it's not because, I know you always tell me that's all I think about, but I'm a businessman. That's what businessmen do. It's about money. The businessmen support the town. They are your bread and butter, and, and you need to take care of them. If, if we have concerns, they should be poo-pooed off, you know, and I'm sorry, please.
Dave, I don't, I don't think they have been. You, you were at a, a planning and zoning meeting where you spoke for over an hour. You've had a lot, a, a, a number of occasions at workshops and other council meetings where you've had the opportunity to be able to express your concerns. Staff has always had an open door for you to go in and, and visit with them. So to imply that you have had hardly any time to talk about this, I think is really not very fair representation, because there have been lots of opportunities.
And I'm not arguing that with you. I've had lots of time, but I'm telling you, the other businesses have not.
I know.
So, and there are a lot of businesses that aren't aware of this. Business in Cortez is very hard to do.
But they've, but they've had the opportunity to come and, and do so, so.
And so, please don't take this wrong, but you're probably the only one on this board that's been in business in Cortez, right?
No.
She's been in business.
I'm a business owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I want to, if you don't mind, I'd like to use yours for reference. You had a catering business, I believe it was between Main Street and First Street. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, like we do, we, we need to.
Okay, but I just want to make one last point. With this code, because you would have backed up to a residential property, you would have had to build a wall around that business.
I had a fence around that business.
But you would have had to build a wall.
Well.
And that wouldn't have been feasible. Thank you for all your time. I appreciate it.
Lance, did you, did you have your hand up?
Linda posts the agendas for every planning and zoning meeting the Friday before the meetings are heard. Every planning and zoning meeting has a start, at the beginning of a meet, of every meeting, there's an opportunity for public comment. If, if, if the businesses don't care enough to spend five minutes looking at the city website, seeing that there's a meeting where there's going to be a planning and zoning -- where there's going to be a planning and zoning commission meeting and public comments will be taken, then how, how, I, I don't know what else, what else can happen. That's, that's all I have to say, I just.
My name is Don Kirk. I live at Nine West Second Street. I've been in Cortez for about fourteen years now. And I have to plead ignorance, because up until recently, I was not aware, and it's my ignorance. I was not aware that I could come here to a city council meeting and listen and make any kind of a difference or statement. So, um, the fact that it's posted here or posted there didn't make a difference for me. And I'm sure that applies to a lot of other people. But I would like to speak as a pedestrian right now. I'm seventy-four years of age. I do not drive anymore. I use a wheelchair or a mechanized vehicle to get around. And I do this mainly on Main Street. I find that this is my way of knowing what's going on in this town. I don't afford a newspaper. Occasionally, there'll be something in there that'll be recommended to me and I will go for it. But it's the store windows, and I don't think I need to name them, but if I do, you ask me. There are the store windows that tell me what is going on in this town. And there are the banners and, uh, all different things that make it a warm town for me to be in. And I would really hate to see, and I'm going to use the expression, I would hate to see this turn into an Orwellian situation, where we are told constantly what we may or may not do, may or may not see. And that's about all I have to say, thank you.
I, I have another question, I'm sorry, something that, that Lana had brought up, and I'm just curious, Tracy, if you know. I looked at the vested rights in the current land use code as opposed to the draft version, which I think is on page twelve to thirteen, and there's also a section on page three forty-five of the code. I don't see any difference in the language. Has it changed?
No, and we've talked a, a lot about it at the planning commission meeting. Um, the vested rights section is pretty much a boilerplate section for most towns in Colorado. Um, it comes out of the state statutes, which I actually printed off some sections right here from the state. Um, so that language is pretty common. It's basically, the state put these laws into effect to provide a mechanism to actually protect the landowners from us changing rules midstream. So they are, according to the state statutes, the recommendation is three years. They're given time to follow through with the development. Um, so yes, it's, it's, if we adopt the code or if we don't, that section is the same. The impacts are not going to change whether we adopt this code with regards to that.
And this is a Colorado v. statute title twenty-four, chapter sixty-eight, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and what's the statute citation?
Um, I think it's one oh one is where it starts.
Just at sack, okay, thank you.
So when we asked about our vested rights in our subdivision in San Juan Park, we were told that our, our particular subdivision was platted before the vested rights state statute was put into place. So no one could tell us what was going to happen with our subdivision. We've talked to Tracy, we've talked to Mike. We were told case by case basis. We were asked about SIA's, which we do not have one, because ours did not fall under that state statute. We were told that those had to be renewed every three years. I think there's several paper subdivisions that are not aware of that SIA having to be renewed every three years and have that infrastructure put in or be in danger of their subdivisions being vacated.
So, but this, this is not changing anything, that's, that's what I was clarifying, it's the same language. It wouldn't, I, I understand what you're saying, but it would have no effect on your particular situation regardless of the language.
But is it just about me? No, it's not just about me, it's about everybody else too. You have to look out for every other subdivision and every other developer out there.
Do, do you think that the state, like the state statute, it sounds like that's what, that's what it's required? We're required to follow the state statute?
I understand that.
Okay, okay.
I understand that, but I don't think that that has been, after having conversations with Tracy and Eva, that, that has not been followed in the past.
Okay, so that's something that we need to look at then, as we move forward.
Apparently, yeah. And ha, and one more comment, have, have you ever built a house?
No.
I have, have you ever remodeled a house? I have, and remodeling takes a lot more effort, a lot more time, and a lot more money than building. And that's what you're going to be doing with this code, is remodeling. And that takes a lot more time, a lot more money, a lot more effort. Thanks. Phil?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, I think that this process was set out to adopt this code and put a promulgation date in, so we could address these things. I think we've heard maybe fifteen items that need to be addressed specifically in this code, regardless of, of the source. Um, and I think, uh, and I, I, for me, a document like this to be, actually be living, this is a good thing. The clash of opinions is how truth is made manifest. I don't know who quoted that, but it's true. And I, I think that this process is good. Um, do I think that, for me, that it should stall, you know, the adoption of it? Maybe we should move the promulgation ba, date back, so we can sit with, uh, the groups of developers who are concerned about these things, like the win, the window coverings or setbacks, et cetera. I mean, we've already, like Lance said, we, at the planning and zoning meeting, we made concessions right there and then. And Tracy and Eva modified the code based on comments we heard. So I think that that, that action in itself has demonstrated that we're willing to modify this code and, and, and make changes based on what we're hearing from our, our customers. And that's what everyone is here, is our customer. So, uh, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Mike?
Turn on your mic.
If, um, if it makes everybody feel a little more comfortable, I've actually asked Linda to kind of keep an eye out and on each agenda until March, have something available if we needed to change something, so we could come to council, come to the land use code. Um, because we were going to be there more than once. Um, and so each and every meeting, you might get something to start the process on changing. Same with the P and Z. So we're committed to working with everybody to make this thing fly.
Uh, what is that date?
March thirty-first.
Third, the thirty-first? And you just mentioned, Mr. Johnson, that if, uh, the waters and other contractors would be amenable to meeting and discussing those ten to fifteen items, or?
I don't know, I know that we would be. And, and, and we're totally open to hearing that input. I mean, we're not working in a bubble. And we want, like I said before, and I know, I know it's been said back to me, you know, I want to see Cortez succeed. Well, I've been told that I'm not the only one that's been in this chair and I know that. But while I'm here, that's my mission.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, pushing it back to the thirty-first, or the date was the thirty-first?
The date right now is March thirty-one, twenty-twenty.
What does that look like, given what, you know, or where we're at? Um, if we push that back a couple of months in order to allow all the parties to be able to get together and discuss things?
You mean implementing it? I don't think staff's going to have a whole lot of heartburn over that.
I just, I just sighed a relief inside, you didn't hear that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like it to be adopted sooner than later.
I, I know, and, and I know how hard you've worked on it, and I know what it, what it's taken. And, and believe me, I do appreciate it. That being said, right, I have a, a, a obligation to the community to try to make the best decision I can, uh, with what time I have left. Uh, the gentleman who mentioned the audits, as painful as that is to hear, I truly do appreciate it. Um, what we try to do, um, is, is the best we can with the information we're given. And sometimes, uh, we trip up. And the only thing we know how to do, or at least the only thing I know how to do, is move forward. And, um, that being said, I also appreciate the comments I heard tonight. And me personally, a little more time to make sure that we have all interested parties that may not get everything they want, but are a little bit closer to the middle on all sides. Um, I think that would say a lot, not only for the community, but it would say a lot for those of us who are leaving council, that we're willing to, to, to make the effort to make sure everyone, uh, everyone is at least satisfied with the final outcome.
I don't know that everybody's going to be satisfied with the final outcome. I, um, if, if, if I thought that pushing this back another six months would make a, a significant difference and there would be, um, suddenly a rush on City Hall for people to come and, and sit down and, um, have taken the time to, to read the documents so that they have an understanding of, of what's in it and, uh, raise concerns, then sure. But I don't think that's what's going to happen. Um, I, I think that if we push this back six months, that six months from now, we will have the same group of people, um, that are here tonight, maybe less dissatisfied than they are now, but probably still with, with things that they are not happy about, and probably no more citizen participation than we have now, which I, 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 I find lamentable. I, I agree with you, Dave, I, we've got lots of apathy, it's not just in this community, it's, it's everywhere. Um, I don't know how you fix that, it's not your responsibility. I don't know what else I can do as a council person to increase participation. I think the city has, has tried real hard to, um, raise awareness, but none of us can go out and make people come to council meetings and participate, we just can't. I, we can encourage folks to do that, but other than that, I, 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 that's about all we can do. Uh, and there are lots of reasons for not participating, but the bottom line is that you don't show up, you don't, you don't, um, inform yourself, um, then, then you, then you've made that decision.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make a motion that we table this? For at least a reasonable amount of time, so that maybe some of these contractors can get a few more meetings and find out a little bit more about it?
Second.
I think we need to, to have a little bit more clarity on that issue first. I don't think we can just table it and say, till, till when? What are the parameters for tabling it? I, I just simply talked about maybe a couple of months, I never mentioned six.
Sixty to ninety days, I would say.
Well, this, this doesn't even go through until March thirty-first.
No.
What I'm saying is, uh, after Mr. Johnson spoke, I asked for a couple of months, not, not six. So sixty to ninety days passed when? What are you?
Past today.
It doesn't go into effect until March thirty-first. I'm saying through May of, May.
So, come back and, and, and bring it up for public hearing at the first meeting in January?
Four.
That's, that's two months.
No, I'm asking for two months past this date of inception.
I think you each have two different concepts here. One person wants to extend the effective date, one person wants to table the motion for sixty days to, um, the second reading effective. So I think you gotta, I'm not sure if you second her motion.
Yeah, no, now we're convoluted with our second.
Who's going to, what you're saying tie is after March thirty-first, extend it to two more months after March?
Right, before it goes in.
Before it goes to the public hearing.
Right.
So you're saying adopt it and extend the effective date, she's saying don't adopt it.
She's saying just extend it from now for ninety days.
To give them more time.
Okay, so actually, I'm, I'm the one looking at giving them more time than what you're saying.
I agree with yours, theirs, because if you wait till March thirty-first, twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty-twenty, was it? I didn't read it.
Twenty, yeah.
And then give the two months after that, what you're saying.
Right.
So, but are, are you suggesting that it be approved, but we just extend it to May for actual implementation? Is that what you're suggesting?
For tonight.
That we, that we go ahead and prove, approve it?
Right.
But we don't put it into effect until May?
No.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't approve it.
You're not approving it?
Not approving it tonight.
So you're, you're pushing this back until May before we actually?
I'm, I'm simply stating that we should give it more time.
But more time for, for what? For written, written feedback?
For the discussions with contractors.
Okay, and so, so what does that look like? Like if they're coming back and they want to, for example, the sign, they want to talk about the sign ordinance. What does that look like? Does that look like them just coming and talking to Phil and Mike? Because that seems to be what's been happening, just kind of not a unified source, right? You've talked to different people.
Sometimes we have been asked to come to work sessions.
Okay.
And then we get told, we don't have enough time to hear your comments.
So what if we do it this way? This is just my suggestion. We give them sixty days to submit written comment that we will review with regards to concerns. Would that, would you feel like that that would give you an opportunity to address the concerns that you have outstanding?
If we get answers the last time, I think, I don't think I believe, I did not get an answer to those written comments for six weeks.
Yes, I recall, I do recall that, and I recall Johnsoning you a, an apology for that. Yes, and so, so that's what I'm saying, if we implement, if, like, for example, if we do a motion that we're going to open a public commenting period outside of, uh, I might be using the wrong phraseology.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But outside of the meeting, to allow you and other contractors, other stakeholders, other individuals within the community to submit written or, I guess, some sort of recorded feedback that we can all review, so we can piecemeal the areas of concern. Not the entire four hundred page code, because a lot of it is just the same language that's already in effect, but the changes that you have concerns to. Do you feel like that would appropriately address some of the, the concerns that you have that you're, don't feel like you're getting to address in public comment, in the meetings?
Are you talking about passing it now?
No, I'm talking about going along with Sue tabling it to give you sixty days to submit written comment.
But once the written comments are made, then?
Then, then it closes.
Then it closes and then it's voted on.
Would we be setting a, yeah, is there any way we could give more, would Chris listen? Right now, this is our busy time.
Retail assistance, hopefully for annoying to be, this is a busy time.
I don't, I'd be with you, or I do, that's it.
The end of January would work, wouldn't it?
If we're going to keep pushing them out of that concern.
All right, you say this is your busy time. How about we move it till the, the public comment is open until the end of January? At the end of January, public comment closes? The, the, um, council then has the opportunity, um, in February to review those comments, um, make recommendations to planning and building. And at that point, then, at the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, then we vote on it. And we're not going to postpone it any longer. That gives you plenty of time, that gives you all of November, half of October, all of December, and January. That's, is, is that reasonable? All right.
Okay, well, in that case, I don't know how to say this, but I'd like to make a motion to off. Yes, please.
Do we have a motion to continue the second reading of public hearing until the last meeting in January?
Yes, absolutely.
And that would keep the process moving forward, because we would still be able to consider what's been said. People would get to come back and give you the comments on what they've seen. But we have a date certain for everybody to meet. If these guys need it, great, if they don't need it, great, we're moving forward, the last meeting in January.
Okay. Uh, Your Honorable Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue this hearing, uh, on the second reading of ordinance number twelve sixty-seven, series twenty nineteen, until the last meeting in January twenty twenty, which would be the fourth Tuesday of the month.
I say.
Wait a second, ma'am. So, so what's the, extend it to when?
The last meeting in January.
The second meeting, last meeting.
Fourth Tuesday.
That would be the twenty, the twenty-first of January.
Actually, question, should we, should we move it to the first meeting in February? Because we gave until the end of January.
Well, the twenty-eighth of January.
Twenty-eighth.
Okay, all right.
Twenty-eighth of January.
Okay, twenty-eighth of January.
Twenty eighth.
That's correct.
Twenty eighth.
Yes.
Do you want to say that one more time?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the hearing of the second reading of ordinance number 1267, series 2019, until the second meeting in January 2020, which is January 28th, 2020.
And public hearing.
And public hearing.
And I second that.
Second.
Bette?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Okay, you guys have got your work cut out for you. All right. Ordinance number 1268, series 2019, which is the final reading, approving the land transfer of East Seventh Street right-of-way from South Sligo to the city line by the city of Cortez to Montezuma County. Mike?
Um, can I change much? We're still going to do the reading for public hearing, and after the public hearing, I'd say the reading to authorize the mayor to sign the property transfer right-of-way because it's a southern edge of the high school, it's a private property, from Sligo to the city line to the county in return. The county's going to build an asphalt paper from Sligo east to 27, and that's all of it.
Okay. Any questions? May I have a motion?
Karen, we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Set the timer.
Got it.
At this time, I want to open this up to public hearing. If there is anybody that would like to speak for or against this action, would you please step to the podium, state your name and address?
No takers.
I see nobody's stepping in. Public hearing is closed. Now, are there any other comments or questions? May I have a motion?
The Mayor makes a motion to approve on final reading ordinance number 1268, series 2019, approving the land transfer of East Seventh Street right-of-way from South Sligo to city line by the city of Cortez to Montezuma County.
I second that.
Noyes?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Bette?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
The next item is the Four Corners office building sale, John.
As discussed in the executive session, there will be a counter offer offered to the county.
Okay. So we don't... We can't really approve the sale. So do we just table the motion for today?
Yes.
Well, can you do a motion authorize the submission of the county's discussed and set aside, and the mayor to sign it?
Push the button. We'd be asking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a counter offer as discussed in the executive session.
Your Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that you sign the offer suggested in executive council.
Second.
Bette?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
New business, the appointment to the Cortez Public Arts Committee. Eric?
Sorry. It's been a while since I've been up here.
Are you still awake over there?
Yeah. Yes, we had one opening for the Public Arts Committee. We had a letter of interest from Sheri Holloman, who submitted her resume as well. She has passed the background checks, she met with the committee. She's also already participated in the committee. She helped us do the survey of artists in Montezuma County. I think she... The committee is very excited about her potential to be on the Arts Committee. So if you have any questions about her, she was unable to come this evening, so...
Did somebody leave?
Yes, Heidi Berger resigned about a month ago.
Oh, she did such a good job on that mural.
The mural, yeah.
The mural walk.
She did an excellent job. That was...
She'll be missed, but it sounds like Sheri's going to be a good replacement.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Council, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I'd make a motion to appoint Sheri Holloman to the Cortez Public Art Committee.
I second that.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bette?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
A letter of support for ballot issue 4A. Council members, you do have a letter at your seat from Jason Dunlap that will be... We won't read it tonight, but it will be entered into the minutes. I'm sorry, what?
There's two letters on the table that when we came in. Are both of them in?
I've already entered Bud Garner's letter.
Okay.
That was entered in earlier. So... So did everybody have a chance to read the letter of support for Montezuma-Cortez ballot issue 4A? Are there any questions or any comments?
I don't know. I don't have any.
No, no questions.
I have a comment. I just actually wanted to say to the educators in the room, I was an educator back in 2003 in Las Vegas as a starting teacher, and I made more money than, fresh out of Fort Lewis, than some of the teachers here do today. So I was pretty impressed to see the statistics and the numbers. It really helped educate me. Thank you for the job that you did.
Any other? Did any of you that are here tonight wish to... Yes, you absolutely may.
You've got four minutes.
So, good evening. My name's Lori Hockness, 25540 County Road, N Point 6 Loop, Cortez, Colorado, and I have to say it is strange being on this side. So I would like to thank you for this time tonight and for your consideration. As you know, we are very passionate about the education of our students and for the future and moving forward. We've been really celebrating some successes and really wanting to work closely with the community. Our next endeavor is creating a graduation profile for our students on what it should look like. We worked with the Chamber this morning. But what is a constant right now is just recruiting and retaining quality staff, and especially our teachers. You know, when I walk into a classroom, chances are fifty-fifty that there's a brand-new teacher in that classroom. And our veteran teachers are getting fewer every year. So what we're asking is for the taxpayers to come forward and for the city's support in getting our salaries at a competitive level, but then also be able to continue the upgrades on the safety of our schools. So I hope that the city council will read the letter tonight and really consider supporting the school district in moving forward with the ballot 4A. And I do appreciate everything you do and for all the time that you put in. I realize what that does take. We have them on the third Tuesday of every month, and just thank you for leading our community. Thank you.
All right, Council, if there are no other comments or questions, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the letter of support for Montezuma-Cortez School District RE1 ballot issue 4A.
One second.
Levy?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bette?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Sheik? That was a long wait. Actually, we put you on at the end of the agenda, so we still have some people here. Thank you. All right. Professional services agreement for a traffic study, Chad.
Madam Mayor, Council members, due to the increasing traffic and vehicular accidents, and also potential for future development in intersections of interest, Public Works is planning to conduct a traffic study of the intersections of Mildred and Montezuma and Mildred and Empire. As a result, we issued a request for proposals to four consultants that the city has had past experience working with. Two proposals were received, one from SGM Engineering for the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and one from SEH Engineering in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Staff has reviewed the proposals. We believe that the proposal received from SGM best meets the scope of services that we issued, which were very clear. The SEH proposal omitted some of the items that we want to look at. As a result, we want to... We recommend that the city enter into a professional engineering services agreement with SGM.
All right, we have had a conversation about this. Is there any other questions, Council? In that case, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to motion that we will consider agreeing professional service agreement for traffic study from the road in Empire Street.
Let's second that.
Keel?
Aye.
Bette?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
I have a question, and it sounds like you just limited his request, which was for one of Mildred and Montezuma. Mildred and Empire, the motion was only for Mildred and Empire. Yeah, I thought it was just Mildred and Empire was the motion. Is that correct?
From the spirit, it did just be Mildred.
Mildred and Empire, I think is what it is. It's that's the one I have on here. It's Mildred.
It's for Mildred and Empire and Mildred and Montezuma. It's two intersections.
You only made the motion for one intersection, so I can clean it out for both intersections.
Can I just read the recommendation of the motion?
Yeah, just read the one off the paper.
Sorry. Make a motion that the city enter into a professional services agreement with SGM Inc. at a cost of eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and to perform traffic studies along Mildred Road. Which hits both of them.
Wordsmith it.
Actually, that's hot spring.
Yeah.
But there you go.
I was just going to say the one on the paper, "traffic study." And that was much better.
Is that clear?
Traffic study.
Okay. Second, and so we need a second.
Oh, I'll second.
We've already had the opportunity to discuss. We had talked about this during the workshop. The only reason we restated the motion was just to clarify that it's for both... It's for a traffic study that will carry the entire length of Mildred Road and include Empire Streets in Montezuma.
I'm thinking he might have a comment.
Oh, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I do. I don't need the... I'm not just about this.
You need to... I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll get there. I feel loud enough voice that should work. Excuse me.
Okay, once again, Don Kirk, Nine West Second Street. As a pedestrian and as a rider in other people's cars, I just think that the monies that you're talking about putting out for a study are kind of ridiculous, because all you really need to do is to stand there and observe what goes on in order to realize what changes might need to be... Might happen. But to bring in a study, wasting, in my opinion, wasting money that could be used in other areas. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, you know, I'll just say sometimes, Mr. Kirk, that money upfront that was already budgeted for, what that might do is offset the cost in the future, so we'll have the best possible designs in place to make sure that accidents don't happen and that pedestrians are taken into account to the full extent that they can. And so what that is, a lot of times, is a failsafe, so we don't incur a cost down the road that's even greater than the money that was set aside for this. And I will say, this money was set aside, it was already budgeted. This isn't anything that is outside the scope of their budget. So we are cognizant of that, that it does seem sometimes like, oh, we're just throwing money at something that could be solved easily. But when it comes to the litigious nature of our society, it's best to put, you know, the good foot forward and make sure we're clear in what our scope of work is and how that'll protect everyone involved.
Mr. Kirk, I'd like to add, too, that you're very concerned about traffic safety and pedestrian safety in the city, and this is money well spent. It's a very complicated intersection to intersections, and we might look at it and say, well, we should put stop signs here or there or something, but these are experts, and they're trained, and they have engineers studying this, and they're doing extensive studying to make it a better intersection, two intersections, for all of us. I share your concern. Thank you, Dan.
So I renew my motion.
Keel?
Aye.
Bette?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Noyes?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, we have no draft resolutions. We do have another item of business that was approved at the beginning. We have been asked for a letter of... We have been asked to send a letter to the PUC regarding tri-state generation trans...
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to abstain from this, because it has Empire Electric written on it.
Yes, you do.
So we'll see y'all guys next month.
Okay, at your place, you see a letter that was written to the PUC regarding tri-state's generation and transmission rulemaking. I did... I got an email requesting that we write this letter, and so I contacted Josh Dellinger at Empire, and I sent him the request, just so that he could see what we were being asked, and got a response back to him, in which he shared some information about what tri-state is already doing. And so the letter that was originally written was... We went back and tempered it in order to give tri-state some support for the things that they have already been doing. One of the points that Josh made was that tri-state wants to be sure that they can provide their customers, which are Empire Electric and LaPlata, et cetera, as low-cost products as they possibly can, just like Empire wants to deliver a low-cost product, high-quality, low-cost product to its customers. And so we wanted to acknowledge that tri-state has moved forward and done some positive things, but encourage them to continue to look at alternative sources of renewable energy, and to also consider those people who will be affected as coal mining and coal-fired plants are retired. coal mining and coal-fired plants are, are retired. So this letter hopefully reflects that.
Who, who requested that you write the letter?
The EEA.
The Empire Electric Association?
No, 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 no. Let me pull it up here.
Yeah, EEA.
Let me take me a minute to find it in my mess. Okay, Joan May, who is an ex-Miguel County Commissioner, she's now working to help get Tri-State Generation and Transmission more in step with the rest of the state as far as lowering electrical rates and improving access to local renewable sources of energy. She's specifically working with co-op members around the state to get Tri-State to utilize more locally-generated renewable energy, and the PUC is holding a public hearing on October the 15th to determine the parameters of rules for Tri-State Energy's resource planning. So, the com, the comment period was open until the 15th, so for us to be able to comment, we needed to make the decision to do that now, simply because by the time we have our next meeting, the comment period will have closed.
Can I ask you a question, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be facetious. Was it in this, was it in what they sent to you to talk about providing the lowest cost to their customers? I mean, was that, was that part of the talking points?
Yes, part of the talking points was to provide low, low cost to customers.
Okay. And I only am skeptical because it's capitalist business. That's, that's the only reason I'm asking. I, I don't know many businesses that ask for support for extra funding to provide lower costs to their customers.
Actually, well, Empire Electric is just based on providing...
Oh, I'm not speaking to Empire Electric.
No, but, but Empire gets its energy from Tri-State and Tri-State. Now, let's see what Josh said here.
And I guess the only reason I bring in, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to bog down this hearing, but we get a lot of requests for letters of support at the last minute. It seems like almost once, once a month, with no information, with these great sounding talking points, but I understand you want to put this on the hearing, and I understand there's a deadline. It sounds to me like, according to this, that this order was issued months ago, and this could have been presented, I think, prior to that time. I, I just, I, I really have issues with this. It was done July 25th, 2019. And I, I just, I feel like, no disrespect to those who are trying to move and shake around the community, but they're asking, or around the state, they're asking us to basically authorize and co-sign their agendas without us really knowing what's going on and only getting one side of it.
Well, do you have that packet?
Yeah, yeah, but I got it today. That's my issue.
Okay, well, because that's, that's what we got it.
I, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, Karen, I'm not upset with you. I'm just saying, I feel like as a policy on council, we're, we, we shouldn't entertain these last-minute requests without knowing what we're actually agreeing to. We've had it happen numerous times with initiatives from the Colorado Legislature, where somebody wants support for their bill, oh, by the way, we forgot to talk to you, Monizuma County, but now we need you, and you have two days to respond. And I really have an issue with that. If they, if they want to take the time to put this whole packet together, then I think they owe us the courtesy of getting it to us so that we can have appropriate time to digest it instead of having to make a snap decision and adjust our agendas to, to basically squeeze their stuff in.
Okay.
It also appears on here that Empire Electric actually has lower rates, they're like eight from the lowest on rates.
Yeah.
And now with Tri-State.
We are with Tri-State.
But the, the EEA, the EEA you're, that, that email is from is not Empire Electric.
Not Empire Electric Association.
But this is Empire Electric stated in this, this cover.
Yeah, as a member.
Yes, as a member of it.
And again, I...
Yeah, quite honestly, yeah, I'm lost, and I'm with Jill this last-minute stuff.
I, I would make a motion to deny the letter of support being issued.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Betts?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, that was easy enough. I'll forget or leave it.
Just leave him like that. He's all right.
We need to go more. There he is. Okay, at this time, is there anybody that would like to address Council? I hope everybody wore out. Okay. City attorneys report there is none. City manager?
I have nothing.
Okay. City Council Committee reports, anybody been to a meeting?
I went to the historical media, preservation meeting last week, and it was a very, very short meeting, but we just discussed that they're trying to line up some houses on First Street that will fit into the history of Cortez. And so that's basically what that was. Nothing other than that.
Hey, anybody else? All right, the workshop this evening, there was a presentation by ChargePoint on a possible high-speed EV charging station to be located in Cortez. A discussion on the recreation center parking lot completion and some issues that have arisen as they have begun the re-asphalting of that lot. There was a discussion on the five-year plan for street assets, so that we, as we move forward, we have a plan in place to be able to preserve our, our streets and then have a, have a timeline for replacing those that need to be replaced. And then we addressed in two executive session, discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, sale of real personal, other personal property, other, other property interests under Colorado Recre- Recrevice Statutes. Is there anything else?
I have one thing, very briefly. As some of you may know, I produce comedy shows. We are doing a special comedy show in Durango on October 18th, and we'll have a follow-up show in Cortez on October 19th. We're calling it the Homecoming Tour. The headliners are all Fort Lewis alumni, and we were featured on the Fort Lewis Alumni page today, as well as myself, and that's why it's the Homecoming Tour. It is 21 and up, but if you are interested, reach out to me. I'd be happy to get you information on both shows. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. We didn't get your arm.
You need any more?
Oh, yeah. It's a problem. Yeah, no, I should have started. I didn't want to work on the show.